Do I have a motion to come back in closed session? Come back in from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we exit the closed bid section and come back into regular session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All right, do I have a motion certifying closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we certify executive session. That the closed session we had was pursuant to the Code of Virginia, excuse me, Section 32, 37, 11, A1, A5, and A8.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we don't have to cover these, do we? All right, just for your information, this is, we're in a continuation of two weeks ago our meeting. So we'll be just a continuation. There won't be any supervisors' time, there won't be any citizens' time. We're just a continuation of a business meeting, business meeting from two weeks ago. All right, Robbie, would you do the pledge and invocation, please?
It's all right. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, thank you for this opportunity to gather together, and we thank you for the little bit of rain you sent this way this evening. Lord, thank you, and ask that you watch over us, keep us safe. Lord protect us since we travel on our ways home. Lord just ask that you assist us in conducting this meeting in an orderly manner. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you notice, we're doing a little bit different agenda and business type stuff. It'll be more information provided to the public, such as payroll invoices and items such as that. All right, I guess we just have to, do we have to have a motion and approval of the payroll and invoices? I'm assuming that we do, all right?
I make a motion that we accept and payment, and accept the invoices and payment of those invoices for payroll and AP register.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Now we go to the new business. This is Robertson, Farmer Cox's proposal for financial forecast and cash flow analysis. The board members had an opportunity to look at that, want to make a motion.
Basically, we need to make a motion to approve the pay structure for doing that, is that right?
Yes, this is, we're, we're hiring, or if the board approves, we'll be hiring Farmer Cox and Robinson for a financial forecast and cash flow analysis. So they'll be looking at our financials and giving us a report, and the citizens a report.
Mr. Chairman, I move we hire Robertson, Farmer, and Cox, is there a financial firm to do this forecast?
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. The request for committees, I'm kind of behind on this one. We have one committee, that's, that's the Personnel Committee, which Dr. Littrell and Bob is on that committee. We also need to, if possible, if the board agrees, to do one on economic development. What was the other?
Building and grounds.
Building and grounds.
Budget and finance.
And budget and finance. And I had Robbie and myself has put in for that. What I plan to do, if that's okay with the board, is we'll, some of them have not been filled, you know, Bob, you sent me some, other folks has not sent me anything, so we'll hold off, we'll just commit to those committees.
Okay.
And carry that to next month, if that's okay with everybody. If everybody wishes to approve those, those, those four committees, well, one of them's already approved, but those other three, I will entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, you'd be looking to form the committees but not fill the positions?
Exactly, yeah, at this point. We've, we've had several people that responded, and we have some that have not, so we're going to give everybody an opportunity to respond to those. And we'll do that at the next meeting.
And the two committees that were recommended was economic development and
And building and grounds.
And
Yes, and audit, and, I mean, budget.
I'll pull it back up. You got budget and finance, economic development, building and grounds, and personnel. Personnel's already a committee, so we need to approve the other three committees.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve these three additional committees to be formed.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And appointments, like I said, I'm going to wait until that is over, I mean, until we have more opportunity for the people to respond back to. All right, we have a presentation by Danny Boyer on processing facility.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to give you a brief update and a progress report on some of the things. I've been working on a regional processing facility for several years now, and we had, with the help of the Tobacco Commission and ARC, we were able to do an extensive feasibility on 11 counties in Virginia and about seven counties in North Carolina. So it serves a pretty broad area. It would be a USDA inspected facility. It all pointed to the fact that there's a tremendous need. Our first study was completed in '11, and you have a copy, I believe, in your packet of, thanks to Crystal, and thank you for doing that, but of the updated plan version of 2018. So basically, the feasibility come back and said, you know, the idea placed to serve the region that we're talking about was from the Carolina line down to the New River along 77, is close to the interchange with 81, you know, as, you know, that was their target. But they did stop there just because of the building down there. So we've come a long way, we have building plans, we've got anchor businesses. When we started out a few years ago, we basically struggled to have commitment of about 25 head a week. Today, we currently have commitment of 75 head a week, people wanting to use the facility. That's the two anchor businesses. There are others, including A&amp;M, Helen Beamer, Four Winds Farm, that's my operation, and others that are interested. This would be a service-for-fee facility, but it would be a USDA inspected. We would handle predominantly beef. We would do sheep and goats as needed, and, you know, add other animals other than the small animals if, if possible in there.
Sheep, would it be like a grass-fed?
It's all, the, the anchor businesses right now are marketing grass-fed and/or organic. And so that is the market that seems to be expanding all up and down the East Coast. Matter of fact, over 50% of all the beef from that line is consumed in the East Coast. We just happen to be within, you know, a truck haul to get that to them, four, 500 miles, and we can cover the whole East Coast with that. We have the, the, the grass here, we have the climate, we have the genetics, we have a lot of things that we can provide a healthy food source for a lot of folks. It will be a custom plant, so other people, individuals, we want to be able to serve everybody in the region. So other businesses that want to start up, or if they're doing conventional, whatever it may be, it will be a USDA inspected facility. We would start out with a capacity of 100 head a week, and this building itself and the size and everything would carry up to 200 head a week, so.
You'd have cooler?
We have coolers and freezers and the whole deal. And, and the idea thing, and of course, we've been working with the county administrator and Kevin and a lot of folks, and we worked with Virginia Fairs, V-Dax, you know, Farm Bureau. We've had a lot of folks, you know, that we're talking to, trying to, to cover all the bases. But, you know, with the, with the amount of infrastructure that's here, and, and the group come back, and these were professionals, basically, that we hired, and they, they give us the location. They said, you definitely need to be near the interstate. So, you know, the hope is that there may be a place out here near the industrial park that we would be able to lease and build it there. There's, you know, some folks working on a receiving station, you know, and this would complement each other really, really well there. So there's, there's a huge need for the facility, and we're situated correctly, we have enough anchor businesses. Matter of fact, our business plan says that once we get up to close to 60 head per week, then we're over breaking even and we're starting to, you know, pay for all the expenses and everything. So we were.
So a, a small producer, you know, the guy, most people are not full-time farmers, they work a job, but they got seven, eight head.
Mm-hmm. And if they have a place that they want to sell to, then they could have it processed in a USDA facility, and it's eligible for sale. If they have a store that wanted to use.
They'd get better price, I would think.
They should, absolutely. And, and of course, this, this market is really, really growing, and it has since we began. And I actually been working on this for about 11 year. And so that market has continued to grow, and it's still expanding. One of the anchor businesses right now, they're shipping somewhere between 60 and 75 head a week, and by the end of the year, they expect to be at 100 head. So, you know, when we first started this, funding is, is always a chore. This is not a, a high-return, you know, deal, but it is good for the community, and it would be really, really good for agriculture for this whole region. And like I say, we're situated so that, you know, it would work really, really, really well right here, if we can make it all work.
Would it, might encompass some in North Carolina?
There would be people in North Carolina that would, you know, want to use it, you know, and, you know, and that's, that's the one thing that our feasibility said. If you try to make it just to serve one or two little counties, you know, it's not going to work. You're going to have to reach out, and you're going to have to serve a broad area so that you can keep it going. You know, the, the folks that kill one a week, or, you know, two or three every month, or something like that, you know, there's a need for that, but that will not keep a facility up and going, you know. You got to pay the bills. These things are expensive. There's a lot of regulations, but, you know, we've, we've got all of that basically worked out. The, the funding, we had a lot of, you know, we had a lot of issues of trying to get our funding together. We have received, we have a $500,000 to come back, the commission grant that we received this past winter. They are very supportive, and we've talked to them several times. Matter of fact, they're the ones that sort of directed us to do a lot of the feasibility study and give them the information. And that took, we've basically put in about $150,000 to $160,000, providing all this information in the planning that we've got. We are eligible, we also, from last Fall's meeting, we had with some folks of all of the agencies and all the funders, potential funders, a recommendation that we work with Virginia Housing and Community Development. There's an economic development block grant that we're certainly eligible for in the tune of $700,000. The applicant would need to be a municipality, or the county would need to be the applicant there. The, the county has to put, you know, something in it, but the land would more than cover, you know, that requirement. That would also help match our $500,000 that we already have from the Tobacco Commission.
So not only North Carolina could enter into it, but?
All the counties.
The counties on 81.
All the counties.
Wes Pulaski Smith.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The county could come trucking in too.
Yeah, there's a few folks over in West Virginia that, they said as quick as it was open, they would be interested coming through the tunnel.
Oh, yeah.
There's actually some people in the edge of Tennessee, and this was a couple of years ago, you know, they've heard about it. And so there's, there's quite a, quite an interest in the facility. There's a tremendous need. It's not easy to get one of these started. I'll tell you that. After we get these steps done, and, and the immediate need, would we, we need to finalize the lease on the property and get all of that worked out, get the application submitted. We have some consultants actually hired, and they have everything ready to go. As soon as they're able to get into the CAM system, they can basically fill out that application, send it to the supervisor, so you can take a look at it and see if it's going to fit in what y'all want to do, and we can submit it. We have to get that done by September, and they tell me, I've talked to the guy that's over the program in Richmond, and he says, it's there, and you're eligible, and there should be no reason that you would not get that if we apply, so.
So I think you've been working with the county here.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely, yeah, that's, that will be our intention. After that, the same consulting firm, and it's Mattson Consulting, Jim Mattson, who does a lot of work on these facilities in Virginia. Matter of fact, he's worked on all of them. Just as a note, in the last 40-year now, you know how many processing facilities has been built in the state of Virginia?
No, exactly, one, one, one.
Yeah, Monterey, Allegheny Meats.
In, in your business plan, you speak of a private investor, is that, is there someone in line that's?
We're, we're, we actually are working on a capital campaign right now, and there's just a couple of missing parts that we need on, on that. So some of the anchor groups may come in and put some local money in, or other individuals have indicated that they may be interested in, you know, in this, just because they believe in, you know, what this is doing, providing a, a good, healthy source of food. And it would be, you know, if we can up the, the value, value-added products from agriculture and the beef line, then that's going to have a positive impact on everybody else around, whether they participate in it or not. It's just going to do it. We're thinking that, you know, we could get up to 5,000 head a year, and then we would have a capacity to go to 10,000 head. So that's, that's a pretty good little chunk, and if, if we can make it all work. The market is there. Now, you know, and Danny Neal with V-Dax, the marketing specialist that covers this area, he is saying that if we can, you know, fill the trucks with the items that they want, whether it be organic, or grass-fed, or whatever, vegetables and fruits and everything else, and we're going to these grocery stores, that's the ticket that they want. They want to be able to call up a place. So we would actually have a little distribution hub already started, and if it grew, then we could expand and go to a larger distribution hub, so we could serve the Carolina, north and south, and the Virginia restaurant, grocery industry.
You think you'd market it under a name like Blue Ridge Mountain Beef, or something?
There, there's a potential to do that. Right now, this company would be Blue Ridge Plateau, you know, initiative, and it's a nonprofit. It's a 501(c)(3), we've had our status for about three year now. We also have a mountain fresh meats.
Oh, I like that.
For-profit company. So that would, we would basically lease it out for the managing of this facility. And so that company could go where the, you know, where the need was. So if there was ways that we could market it and a brand, a name here, then that's exactly what we would do. These other folks, they basically have, have a brand and their name. But, you know, the Blue Ridge Plateau, mountain fresh meats, that will give an idea of the cattle that's grown here in the mountain with the climate, the fresh water, the clean water, you know, all of that. So that's something, just like the cabbage and a lot of the other things, that's something that could go a long, long way.
Kind of like a one-stop shop.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Once upon a time, I doodled bug with cow calves, and I soon figured out that you're better off taking them calves to a, to a state sale, and you were just at a, a regular day.
Yes.
Sale. Would, for a small person, would, would his price be competitive if he went through this, your agency? Would it be competitive with the state sale as far as him making a profit or something?
It should actually add value, depending on who he hooked up with to market his animals. And there are a lot of people that already are in the business, they're looking for people to follow their protocols, raise cattle, and then basically finish them to the point that they want them finished, however that may be, whether it's organic or whether it's grass-fed. But yes, there should be a value added when you direct market it to the consumer. If we can get tractor and trailer loads hauling it, going to these chains right now, grocery store chains, then that is, is a plus. The group that I'm actually with, our biggest customer is Whole Foods, and they're buying the big chunks and the primals, and they are paying a premium. Now, we make sure that they get quality, you know, quality items, and so that there's a set of protocols that each marketer would have, so that you can, you know, you can, traceability is another big thing, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunities for small people to either join in or create a business of their own, and the, the lacking part in all of this is a USDA certified inspection facility. There, there's a need for that. We're basically having to ship cattle right now to Marksberry, Kentucky, or down in St. Augustine, South Carolina. That's a long haul to ship cattle.
And there's a whole lot of market in between.
And we actually have to go get it and then bring it back and, you know, do it, make, make the sale, so absolutely, there is. It's, it, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a quick and easy thing to make a lot of money. That's the reason, you know, Jerry Moles here, Dr. Jerry Moles, he's my planning partner, and after we looked at him for a long time, we decided that we, this needed to be a nonprofit, that basically they would own that, so that, you know, we're not having to make the money to pay everything back and, you know, on that. So this is going to be for the producers out there and the people that's using the facility. Now, you know, in order to stay in business, you have to make a profit, and you have to pay your bills and your employees and all of that. That's the reason for the for-profit that would be actually doing that. But, you know, this is a piece of needed infrastructure, in my opinion, that this whole region needs badly. We have a golden opportunity right now, I think, better than I've ever seen. Go Virginia is highly interested. Matter of fact, they're saying, when is the application coming? You know, they are interested in helping. We're going, we've already talked to the folks in Washington DC, EDAP, and we're eligible, and they said, you know, for construction, that they, possibility that we could look for something from them. So after we get the one from Virginia Housing and Community Development, you know, the Economic Development Block Grant, then these other two applications to Go Virginia and EDAP, they're ready to go. Once we get to the point that we're starting to put equipment in the facility, then we go back to ARC, and, you know, and, and they know us well, and they already helped us some as far as getting the feasibility. So we'll apply for that. And then we've got our capital campaign going, and, you know, we will have some local funds that goes into that also.
If you need somebody to handle these cattle coming in and so forth, I recommend Robbie, you're, he's big enough to handle up to 1,100 pound.
Well, we'll certainly need to have someone in the facility, if we get to 100 a, a week. And, you know, my, you know, my guess right now is that, you know, we can get started, and as soon as we get to people training, we actually working with the Meat Science Lab in Tech, the, the processing facility, we actually patterned our plan, a lot of it after that, plus others that we actually went and looked at. But they're willing to do, there's some HACCP training and food safety issues that are coming up, and they're willing to work with us. It may even be that we would be able to take interns from that program and let them come to a facility like this, and, and from an educational standpoint, just to train, you know, those kind of folks once we're up and running. But we could get to 40 or 50 head really quickly, and then get to our 75 head, and then as we progress, you know, I think we would be reaching 100 head fairly quickly. It's been, been a long process. There's, actually Jerry has some, some other information from the regional standpoint. We've got some other things that we've been doing. Did, did you get, do you have the packets with the, okay. So this maybe will answer some of your questions. We have all kinds of studies and feasibilities, and we did a farmer survey, you know, and worked through extension, we worked with a lot of folks. We have lots and lots of information. So if you have additional questions, we'd love to be able to, to work with you. The thing, I guess, that we will need in the next, you know, little bit would be, you know, to finalize a lease on the property so that, you know, we can send that in, and also to get this application to VHCD, and, you know, get that going. So those are the immediate things. We have consultants that can do everything, you know, from the standpoint of the, our information, and then we can send it to you, y'all would add your information and, you know, make that decision, go from there. Be glad to entertain any other questions, or?
The, approximately two years ago, I was invited to go to the White House for a report on rural America and prosperity, and it was really more about producing food for the future and what, because the United States population by 2050, which is what, 30 years now, will be 400 million, and, and the food is not going to be grown in New York City. It, it's going to be out in rural America. And they proposed a lot of things, their recommendation to get ready for that, but, research and hands-on expansion, you know, and I, I see this as right down in line with what the President's Council were looking at, and the, and I'd be surprised if there's not some money available at, at the federal level.
And we're, we're looking, we're exploring all of those avenues, and, you know, basically everyone that we've talked to, they seem to be interested.
Sonny Perdue is the head, he's the head of the whole thing, and they, they've, they've got people working on things right now.
Yep. Okay, anything else? Okay, anything else?
When you gonna start?
Just as quick as we're able to break ground. Once we get our financing, and if we can get a million dollars to start, we're ready to go, sir.
The, uh, the old fence builders in Carroll County use one strand of barbed wire. You might want to consider something more substantial.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, we'll make it, uh, what's the old saying? Uh, barn, uh, I mean bull tough and, and pig tight, you know, so.
My, my granddaddy was in World War I, and when, when he was drafted and sent over, they went over on a German passenger liner, luxury liner, that was in New York City, and he liked that. But when he came back, they put him on an English cattle boat, and he said all the food lockers were on the deck, and the cook would go up and go in the meat locker, and it was all goat meat. And he would come out carrying a quarter of goat meat with the hoof and the fur going up, and he said somebody laid the cook out up on the deck. He stepped, as the guy stepped out, you know. So, I hope you have more success than the goat and cook.
Yeah, I do, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Danny.
I like beef with my cabbage.
I take it you're not working with the New York Congressman, uh, lady, whatever her initials are, 'cause she said, "Doing me and cattle in ten years," so, you know. But, um-
All right. Next on the agenda is the Commission of Arts Grant. This needs, uh, approval and appropriation.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the Commission for the Arts Grant in amount of forty-five hundred dollars and appropriate it as needed?
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
They do a lot for the school systems and, uh, have them for years.
Motion and the second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion passes. The, uh, also we have the Virginia County Official Summit. That's just for everybody's information, and there's no action needed for that. And request for additional meeting. Do I have a motion to approve and set dates for that? You know, for the additional Board of Supervisors meeting?
Mr. Chairman, the student-
Go ahead, Dr. Dalton.
I'm sorry, I was going to propose that we meet on the fourth Monday at seven PM.
Okay. I have a motion that we meet-
What about, are we going to leave the other one as it, as it stands, or do we want to change it to a different, later time also?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think Mr. Dalton's, um, intention was to have one of those meetings during the day, and then one in the evening.
Well, uh, we have, our, our board has different hours for work, and some of us retired, and some of us had to work. So, you know, we'll just have to make adjustments for Mr. Dalton. So, we have, uh, we have a motion for, to the fourth Monday at seven PM. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second.
I'd like to see, uh, the chairman, or you work with Mr. Dalton and, uh, and so forth.
Fix the, whatever. All right, yeah, oh, okay, that's, is, are you making that into motion?
Well, we got one motion.
We got a motion on the, we got a motion.
We can, we can always amend.
All right, I got a motion for the fourth Monday at seven PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion? Um, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. All right, motion carries. We can certainly, we can adjust our, our, if we want, so desire, and, and another meeting, we can adjust the, the other meeting that we normally have at six. You know, that, we can do that, and we'll, Mr. Dalton will be here for the next meeting.
I know there's some flexibility built into that, because you'll sit down with, uh, Mr. Sale Dalton, and he may say, "We need to do this because of whatever," and, and so, it could bounce around a little bit.
All right, so we got that. We have, now we'll have two meetings per month, and it will work like this. Normally, we'll have the one for the citizens to make comment and addressing, the Board of Supervisors to have their comments, and the rest of it will be a business-type meeting. But you will have a lot of information to digest going forward. Now, I did, did I get the, the, uh, we did vote on that, did we not?
Uh, not yet.
All right. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next one is the Local Law Enforcement Block Grant. This needs an approval and appropriation. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve and appropriate the Local Law Enforcement Block Grant.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second you.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is, we need approval for the, approval and appropriation for the Victim/Witness Grant. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept and appropriate the Victim/Witness Grant.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Phil.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next one is the School Resource Officer Grant. I need a motion for approval and appropriation.
I move that we, uh, approve the, uh, School Resource Officer Grant and appropriate needed funds.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Bob? The School Res-, the School Resource Officer is a pretty good-
Oh, yeah.
-uh, thing that we have in the county, in the schools. Is that not correct?
Absolutely, and, uh, and, uh, it's not only here, but it's nationwide, and I think it prevents a lot of problems, and Lord forbid, if, if you did have somebody unauthorized that entered a building, he, he would, that person would be very much, uh, deemed a man.
And I think it's an opportunity for the, our law enforcement to interact with the students.
Oh, yeah.
Become very familiar with the students, and they can pick up things, too. So, I think there's a good, I think, a good expenditure of money, I, I might be.
Oh, yeah.
All right, any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. All right, the next one is, we need to approve the petty cash account. Do I have a motion for that?
We're going to discuss it, right?
Yeah.
I, I move that we approve the petty cash account.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All right, discussion.
How, what are we, what is our limit in our, right, is it five hundred?
I think, I think it's, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask, but-
It was two thousand.
Oh, excuse me.
Did we, was there a recommendation in there?
They put a thousand dollars.
A thousand?
Mr., yes, Mr. Dalton said that a thousand.
Okay. The reason, reason we have to do that, when there's a change, like, yes, you close one account, then you re-
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm, I would like to amend my motion and, uh, and make it a thousand-dollar limit on the account, on petty cash.
And do I have a- Well, by second, if he wants to restate the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, that we, uh, maintain a petty cash account in the amount of one thousand dollars.
All right, now, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Any old business? All right, I guess, is that everything?
I'd just like to say that, that I think the board is moving in the right direction, and Sale Dalton is certainly helping, and that is, uh, uh, I don't think anybody on the board is in favor of doing secret kind of stuff, and more people, or more information we can put out there. I think it's better for citizens.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, will you adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, I mean, adjourn.
Adjourn, okay.
Yes, please, Tom. Thank you, sir.
Greg will be the second thing tonight.
Yep.
Sort of stage like it is.
Yeah.
Unless, I like it, where I'm on PSA, I can, you know.
Yeah.
Get two and one.
I don't have a problem with that.